Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the world where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, like Colleen Ward and Cheryl Council members are in attendance, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight we have two public hearings. If you would like to address the council, please step to the podium and give your name and address for the record. This time and place for a resolution, or for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution sixteen dash two fifteen, approving the plan specification form of contract, cost and cost estimate for Keynesville Boulevard, commonly known as U.S. Highway six, traffic adaptive signal control project FY fifteen dash twenty ten. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to talk to the council in regards to this matter?
My name is Greg Cassidy, live at five oh five South Sixth Street, Regal Towers. And on this particular matter, I just wanted to let you know, it involves the traffic signal system, I believe, the one involving where Keynesville and Broadway come together. And I do want, I agree something needs to be done because if I stop at Super Saver and then decide to go west, and then decide I want to, you know, stop off, get a taco, it's like I have to stop that intersection and wait forever to turn left. And I don't believe you're allowed to turn left on red, so I'm waiting, there's no oncoming traffic, and I'm glad you guys are working on that part of the intersection. Another area is Harrison Street and Keynesville. I know that traffic signal there, the clicker, it's seven seconds instead of like the fifteen or twenty seconds that elsewhere. And it's almost, I don't want to use the word speed trap, but it's almost, by the time your eyes visualize and see the light changing from white crosswalk to orange and counting down to seven seconds before you know it, you're on top of it, you know, so I'm glad that. And the other one is at Seventh Willow, across from Bloomer. I notice if you're turning south on Seventh Street and want to get going, it's like you stop there, even in the summer when there's no school, and it's like you're all day long, you're waiting for the light to change, and there's nothing coming crosswise on Willow. So I'm glad, I hope that these kind of changes will be part of what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution sixteen dash two sixteen, disposing of that portion of Cassidy Street between Fleming Avenue and Yonkerman Street, vacated by Resolution number fourteen dash three fourteen, OTB dash sixteen dash oh thirteen. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter?
This one kind of shocked me, I didn't even know about it. It involves this street that no longer exists in town called Cassidy Street, which is amazing because it's the same as my last name, a very rare spelling. And we always wondered when we moved to this town in early seventies if we were related to who the street was named after. And it turned out, no, because we're not related to the judge who lived during the early era of this city. But the only time I'd ever see it was on old Council Bluff's maps within phone books. And I always wondered what was going on. And it's just weird coincidence, I show up on the one day or second day of my whole life, and you guys are dealing with this. And I'm, I'm just giving my approval, go ahead and, you know, get rid of it. Thank you.
Kind of getting, getting rid of your name. All right, anybody else? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to, I don't know how to say it, act as an unbuildable lot with a thousand dollars offered from the gentleman with the balance to be forgiv- on a forgivable loan.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
The, the purchase price to be that amount as recommended by staff, but, but all but one thousand of it to be forgivable upon successful maintenance and taking care of the property for a period no less than three years.
So that's the second and the first concurrence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordnance is on first reading. Ordnance sixty-two seventy-eight, amending Title Nine Traffic by amending Chapter nine point three six point zero one zero, definitions by adding Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, and Veterans' Day to subsection two Holiday.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just want to mention, reiterate, the mayor mentioned this afternoon, a lot of people thought they don't have to feed the meters on holidays as the meters indicate, but not every date that may be a declared holiday is, has been a holiday for purposes of the meters. And this is, I agree with the mayor's suggestion that we add Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, and Veterans' Day to those holidays, that feeding the meters isn't required. Apparently, a good number of people got tickets on those days, if I understood the mayor correctly. And I think he's right to make those days that we don't charge for the meters, so, and I thank you for bringing that forward.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordnance sixty-two seventy-nine, amending Title One Administration and Personnel by amending Chapter one point six two point zero three zero, Classification and Appointment to change Architect or Engineer Appointment to either Residency or Employment within the City of Council Bluff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution sixteen dash two-one-seven endorsing a rise, an application for rise program funding to reconstruct portions of Gifford Road and to extend South Nineteenth Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just that this is going to be helpful in that area developing for economic development purposes. We don't have nearly enough vacant site available. This is an area we're trying to get shovel-ready sites so that we can bring businesses and industry into Council Bluff, so I'm real hopeful that we would get this through.
Yeah, I concur with that. There's, there's already a lot of promise. There's been already plans to, to build in that, in that area set forth, and, and I think with this project, it'll really help to encourage more, more businesses to come in, which will create jobs. So, good for the community.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-one-eight authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute Iowa Department of Transportation pre-construction agreement number two thousand and seventeen dash four dash zero five zero in connection with the I twenty-nine interstate improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-one-nine authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with ABC Electric Incorporated in connection with the WPCP sludge building MCC replacement project.
No, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-twenty authorize the mayor to execute the consent to collateral assignment of agreement for private development for the one hundred block project phase two.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-two-one authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with project advocates for owners' representatives and related services during the design, development, bidding, construction, and commissioning phases of a new police headquarters building.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-two-two authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hofer Weissaki Architecture for Design and Related Services during the design, development, bidding, construction, and commission phases of the new police headquarters building.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-two-three authorizing designation of one thousand and one South Sixth Street as a brownfield as defined by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-two-four adopting a revised investment policy for the City of Council Bluff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just, we had a fairly extensive discussion this afternoon, but for folks who might be listening this evening for the first time, the administration has come forward with a very prudent revised investment policy for consideration. Basically, to the extent we have money in any of, in any of our cash accounts at banks, there are ways that that money can be invested or held by the various banks that would increase the amount of money that the taxpayer earns on that money by, by generally anywhere from fifty to a hundred percent with no relative increase in risk to the taxpayer. So it's a great way of stretching even further your tax dollars, and I commend the finance director and the mayor for coming forward with, with the proposal to find these ways to stretch every last penny and make it go as far as it possibly can. This is very prudent, and I support it.
So, Director of Finance has come across with many good reforms and suggestions since he came on and appreciate his hard work.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-two-five establishing authority for execution of business transactions between the City of Council Bluff, Iowa and institutions authorized to hold city funds non-corporate resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash two-two-six naming and approving city depositories.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, seven A, B, C, and D.
Motion to approve seven A, B, C, and D with one amendment on C, there is no outdoor permit application.
Second. As amended.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council? Joy, can you give your name and address for the record?
My name is Joy Moffett. I live at thirty-four oh two Middle Ferry Road, down in the seven at Fox Run. And we are right on the corner of Harding's Landing Road and Middle Ferry. And we have little wee ones riding their little bicycles behind daddy and mommy when they're out for walks at night. And you can't believe the cars that come by there and just zoom, 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 you know, and they don't even slow down. I am proposing that we get a stop sign on East and West on Middle Ferry Road because we're building a new addition on up Middle Ferry Road. So I think there's, the traffic is really going to increase by the time these houses are sold, and I really believe that we're going to have to have those stop signs there for the safety of the children.
Okay.
There's more little ones coming into that neighborhood all the time.
You can do it. Can we, yeah, do a traffic study?
Okay, okay. I did have another question. The, and this probably doesn't even concern me, but my question is, where echo lighting is and across this highway is this big, great big block of cement that is empty?
UFO landing zone.
Yeah. It's for the UFO? Okay.
We don't hide it very well.
It was a company, it is a company, XTL, which is a cold storage warehouse. We are continually assured that they are ready to restart their construction process.
Okay.
But it is a concern because it has not gone well, and, and then there is some weed problems.
Yeah.
They mowed it.
They did get mowed, yes. I, I seen that they were mowed, and I thought it looked very nice, by the way. So, I thank you.
Yeah, we, we got our fingers crossed they're going to start back up.
I hope so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down tonight and talking to us about your concerns.
Bruce Kelly, eight six four McKenzie Avenue, the bike trail.
She beat a janitor, Bruce.
Someday I might get somebody to go, oh, God, we've got to do something.
You could donate money for it, and then we can do it.
Well, you got state money, and it's state property.
If only it were that simple.
Exactly.
No, I know that. But I just, it's something that, you know, I'm passionate about. And I got to say, I've heard a lot of people complaining about the size of Council Bluff and everything, and it hasn't grown or anything. I think Council Bluff has done a great job not annexing everything and going into a spiral where a lot of these cities have, so congratulate you on that.
Thanks. Anybody else wishing to address the council?
Mayor Walsh, City Council, my name is Joel Driver. I live at five oh five South Sixth, Department one thirteen. On Monday evening, September twenty-sixth, Council Bluff has their annual meeting at the Mid-America Center, and it's a real good, they have a good meal, and they give awards to all of the employees of the different Council Bluff, Ottawa, Sioux City, and that. And I won the two thousand and fourteen Spirit Award.
Yes, you did.
On that day.
Congratulations.
Yeah. And if you'd like, it's a good meal, it's a good time, and if you can make it, great to see you there.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Teresa Jacoby, thirty-eight Dilman Colonial Plaza Apartments. I'd just like to give an update both to the council, although the building division and the mayor's office and everybody has been working feverishly on this issue for two days. But for the people at Colonial Plaza who are sequestered in their apartments because they're afraid to go out in some situations, and they're terrified that they're going to be the next persons to be evicted if they say anything to anybody. And so I just wanted to kind of update, I know Nate has talked about communication problems sometimes, and it's kind of slow, and since this is just all coming up now, I wanted to indicate that I've seen a lot of lawyers, and when they see me walk in, they go like, yeah, I don't think so, but, the, the ones that I have talked to, and part of it is, is because of some of the other people who have gone to legal aid. So I went to legal aid, and even though my assets are more than they can, you know, that I have to get a regular attorney. But Mike Tollis was very, very informative for me and mentioned lots and lots of things. And he gave me the yellow book of the landlord-tenant thing, and I read that, and he mentioned too that, that this case is very complicated, and he would just give me some information about be sure and read the retaliation part on there. And the reason I think I'm being retaliated against are a couple of things. One may or may not be valid, but the fact that there are four people in the apartment complex who report everything anybody says or does at the apartments to Judith Garnos Hutink in Sioux City. And so, and, and so it's, it's very tricky that anybody is really talking about that. For example, I got a note on my door anonymously about some things, and part of it is that, that they think, this, this takes a long time. This is going to take a long time in order to resolve this issue. But one of the things that, that I got was an actual eviction notice, and I was talking to, I was talking to Anthony Talkie because someone else was up there with him, and he looked at this and he said, that's not legal, you know? But he also said, I don't want to get involved in this, so go find an attorney. So I'm in, I'm in the, in the market for an attorney. One of the other gals that have gone to legal aid ended up going to Donna Bothwell, also at the legal aid. And it's just, the thing is, the only thing about the city with that is, is the forty thousand dollars. But I understand that she claims that she didn't get the information, she was supposed to come here, so whatever. So one thing I would kind of like is the letter that Judith wrote to the city to not make her pay the forty thousand dollars. Now, how she would know about that if she, if she would write a note that says, please waive that? So that's one issue. The other is the elder abuse. I have on my camera today, just for the fun of it, I was coming down here, and Elsie was walking up, she's eighty-one or eighty-three or something like that, and she was climbing over the fence on the outside to get in her door. And I said, why are you doing that? And she said, well, I don't go in and out my door because I have my lock, I mean, it's locked, and I have a chain lock, and I, I'm just too scared to go out without that chain lock on. So what I do is I go out the front door, you know, and I feel more comfortable. And so she says, I just climb over this fence thing to get into my apartment. That's just one of the kinds of terrorism sorts of things that's going on with thirty of the forty families that live at Colonial Plaza. The reason there's only thirty there is because so many people have been terrorized and just sick and tired of the harassment that they've just automatically left. It's probably nine hundred or a thousand dollars a month to live there. So Judith is not collecting, well, ten thousand dollars a month because people are leaving. But some of us are hanging on there, and we think ultimately we will win. But to, to give an example of that the city has really been working on this hard, there is that, which lawyer am I looking at now? Oh. Help me, Dick.
Dave McCann?
Yeah, Dave McCann. Oh, yeah, it's right here. Dave McCann shared with me today that the special warranty deed that they did find out that it's like, who actually owns this? And it says Colonial Plaza, forgot my glasses, penitive property LLC and Iowa Limited Liability Company. But they're working on who exactly that is. And my question is to him, legal aid attorney, Mike Torres, I said, who do I pay my rent to? And he said, well, pay your September rent. And it's like, who to? And he's like, well, until we resolve, who to? Who do we send our rent to? So that's the thing, I'm trying to decide what to do and how to do it. It's just, it's hard for me to send it to, to put it in the mail slot of the apartment there because three different people have access to that, and none of them have anything except for having the keys to every apartment, which is another thing that bothers the rest of the people. There are people there who have access to all of their apartments. Anyway, thank you very much for the city and the legal aid, and the reason I'm talking is because, like I say, there's thirty families there, a lot of them have left, some of them have been evicted, and it's hard for me to get in touch with all of them because Judith has indicated that we no longer can have Tuesday morning coffees downstairs. I guess, I guess that's a form of intimidation too, she just doesn't want to come.
Kind of think that was because of the city, because there is no fire suppression in that room to have a meeting.
Okay. So that's the fire department. I understand that, and I think somebody told me that too. But, but, so, we're, we're waiting to see when the other shoe will drop, but thank you very much for everybody listening.
Thank you.
And like I say, the people all up there aren't here, you can see, because they're terrified that they're going to get the next eviction. Now, I think two reasons I got, just always one more thing with me. The reason that I got my eviction notice was that since the city code doesn't cover mold or radon, because the mitigation of it is sometimes toxic to people that are around. So I purchased three radon kits on seven eighteen sixteen, and I asked some of the guys down at the coffee if somebody would help me put them up, and Terry, Terry Lawson said, yeah, I'll help you put them up. So they were installed on seven thirty-one sixteen, and on eight four sixteen at five forty-five AM, Terry found that they were missing. Somebody cut them off or did something with them. And so, as a coincidence, I don't know, maybe it was that I talked to city council, or maybe it that I filed a police report about the stolen property, or I don't really know what, but it's quite a coincidence that they were put up on the thirty-first and taken down on the fourth, and on the eighth I got my eviction notice.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Greg Cassidy, five oh five South Sixth Street, apartment three one seven. I'm here to point out that, oh, by the way, somebody left their.
Oh, it's.
Okay. Well, the first thing I want to say is where I live is Regal Towers, and just want to let everyone know that I guess they made local history, they hired their first female maintenance person. It's always been male for, ever since I've known, and they hired their first female named Teresa, and she's on board now. The other thing was just to point out that this is my fifth time in front of the board, or actually the fourth time, fourth time. First time I was here, I just sat in the, it was part of my local IWCC, local government course, and so I just sat in and watched. The other couple times I was here had to do with.
I was here had to do with, I was with a bunch of legionnaires, and we made effort to change the South Omaha Bridge Road to Veterans Memorial Highway. The third time involved being in here was part of the, that Tiger Cage buh-haha during one, a couple years ago during a May parade. And the one other time I was here, maybe a couple years ago, I tried to discuss a particular sensitive topic, and Matt, your predecessor shut me down with extreme prejudice, so I never got my message out at all. And, and so, and the only last thing I want to say, that's basically it. And I want to thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council?
I just wanted to take an opportunity to extend my sympathies to the family of Vern Welch. Vern was very dedicated to Council Bluff, and he served this community with everything he had. He, I would just say that I don't know that Council Bluff would be what it is today without the efforts of Vern Welch. And we all owe him a debt of gratitude. And I just wanted to, again, you know, extend my thanks to his family for sharing him with our community for all these years.
I agree.
Wilson. Anyone else? With that, we adjourn.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.